...quarter permissioners work session for August. Today is August 8th, and I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Rosen.
Present.
Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Present.
And first item is ceremonial and recognition. Anyone like to add anything?
I didn't really have anything this week, but I would like to take a maybe like 10 seconds at least or something, a moment of silence for those lost in the floods and for baby Riker that we lost recently. So if we could take a moment of silence for those people that have passed, that would be great. Thank you.
We'll move on. Do we have any citizens' comments, Alexis?
So I signed up because I don't know if I'll need to talk about the NEA grant or not, but that's why I'm here. So I'm just here, you know, so I don't need to say anything.
You don't need to say anything beforehand.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have executive session on the agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for KRS 61.8101G, discussions between a public agency and representative of a business entity, and discussions concerning a specific proposal if open discussion would jeopardize the siding, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business. This discussion pertains to a new business proposal related to implementation of the downtown master plan. Action may be taken in open session.
Second.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now go into executive session. We'll stay in here. Go on. Thank you all for waiting. Next up, staff reports.
Great, thank you. Katie Beard.
Mr. Waldrich?
No.
Mr. Waldrich? Sorry, I didn't see your name.
Point of order. Thanks, sir.
I didn't see her. Were you looking right at me?
It was my hair, I'm sorry.
If I may, make a motion to move action item number four on up now for the NEA Our Town Grant.
Okay, we have a motion to move action item number four.
Second.
To current, okay. Any second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll start with action item number four, NEA Our Town Grant.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say a big thanks to Penny Peebler, Rebecca Hall, and of course Melanie Van Houten for spearheading this effort to secure a grant for internationally known multimedia artist Dread Scott to install a new sculpture at Josephine Sculpture Park. As some of y'all may know, Dread Scott is an activist artist whose work really pushes people out of their comfort zone and addresses head-on issues of racism and equity. And this grant would help us implement our Arts Master Plan and our strategic plan priority of diversity, equity, inclusion, and access.
We have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca, for helping us put together a grant application for this program. You have in your pocket a concept drawing of the sculpture that Dread Scott proposes to erect. It is a very large sculpture, so we felt that having it at Josephine Sculpture Park would be extremely appropriate because it's open 365 days a year from dawn to dusk and free. And I guess I will just say that activating our equity, diversity, and inclusion focus area of the master plan, I feel is such a good fit with our Arts Master Plan and particularly with nationally known artist Dread Scott. This would be, I think it's fair to say, Melanie, correct me if I'm wrong, we have had a number of really important artists visit us in Frankfurt, but I think Dread Scott would probably be the most nationally known artist that has come to live and work in our community. And further, we have the opportunity to engage organizations like FOR and other organizations. Yes, and why don't you speak about that? Because I think there's something really special about this that I feel not only elevates the art in this community, but really elevates the conversation that we're trying to have about equity and belonging. And that's why it seems like Dread Scott is a unique opportunity for us, so.
Yep. I'm Melanie Van Houten. I'm the director of Josephine Sculpture Park. Nice to see you guys all again, and thank you for considering, you know, partnering with the Sculpture Park on this amazing opportunity. I've been talking with Dread for a year and a half, maybe. Actually, it was like before COVID. It's like a Twilight Zone year. So we started talking in the fall of 2019, but we've kind of stayed in communication. He's very interested in doing a big project of this scale. He's never done anything like this in Kentucky. I think it would bring a lot of awareness and visibility to our community. That is what his work is about, and I think it's an amazing opportunity. As you guys know, the Sculpture Park partners with a lot of different other organizations in the city, folks on race relations, the Grand Theater, Yes Arts, the King Center, and we would anticipate doing different kinds of outreach programming with Dread while he's here, doing an artist talk at the Grand Theater like we've done. But Chica Booker was here, we did the artist talk, and several other artists, T Kid, and a few others that we've done over the years. So we would be partnering with other organizations as well on the programmatic parts in addition to the sculpture, which will be massive in scale and, you know, will live at the Sculpture Park for many, many years. I mean, it will become an iconic piece at the park, and we're really excited about that as well. So we'll have programming at the park as well, but I think it goes without saying that it will far exceed the boundaries of the Sculpture Park, and we'll do a lot of programming in the city as well. Anything else you want me to add?
Sorry, I forgot to mention that this is seeking $100,000. It's a one-to-one match, so it could be up to $50,000 for the city to match this effort. We've already received, you have a commitment of $10,000 for the Fund for the Arts to help also offset the cost.
Yes.
And we'll obviously raise money for this, but there is that requirement, which Rebecca can speak to. When we had our conversations with Andy Seth about it, he felt that this was a strong application based on the fact that we've been successful with some Our Town Grants here in Frankfurt, and that we would be focusing on a nationally recognized artist to bring Dread Scott here to live and work in our community for this period. And it's exciting. He's exhibited at 21C. I've spoken to 21C in Louisville and Cincinnati about having him go there while he's here. So I think this would be in 2024, and 2023 would be the planning year because we would find out about the grant in 2023, I think. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's all I have. If anyone has any questions, we're all here, and thank you so much for coming.
Yes, and thank you for making the motion to pull this to the front of the meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this? I just have one question. So you mentioned raising money for this. Is that, will any money raised will that lessen the amount that the city has to put forward? Okay, good. So our max is 50.
Right.
Yes.
But I mean, we, in order to apply for the NEA grant, we have to agree that we would match it. But if it's permitted, you know, my intention is for us to privately raise, to personally privately raise, because I am really invested in bringing Dread Scott here. I think it's transformative for our Arts Master Plan, for our visual artists who work here. But yes, I think you're agreeing that we would match it, but.
We meaning, does not, city and any private, right?
I'm looking at them.
So we're looking at 50, and they just said they had 10,000?
So far.
So that's 40, great.
That's what I'm getting at.
So we're at 40. We need 40 more.
Right, that's.
Makes sense.
But you can, can private dollars be counted as a public match?
Yes, yes, it can. But for, what Penny is right, for the grant application, we need to let them know that, yes, we will match it with general fund dollars if that money can't be raised, but whatever can be raised can be contributed to it.
Perfect.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen, do you have a question?
Mute.
You're on mute. Commissioner Rosen.
This is a garden man bringing people here to see us.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And city clerk, we call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Rosen.
Yes.
Commissioner Unger.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes. And that motion carries. Thank you all. Now we'll go to staff reports.
Yes, thank you. And now we'll welcome our Public Works Director, Katie Beard, here to talk about our proposed paving projects and fiscal year '23, but also give a little bit more about kind of what we spend, maybe what we need to spend, and some best practices.
Yes, so I'll give you a brief update of what we have done the past few years. We did have a little catching up to do. We've talked about this before. In fiscal year '20, we actually spent about a million dollars. We had some funds that had been stored up in our municipal aid account during transition of my position and other positions in the department. So the next year in 2021, I'm sorry, that was '21, the years do run together. In 2022, we have just spent $300,000 with Flynn, our contractor. We have paved Leonardwood, portion of Leonardwood from Walmart to King's Daughters, Commonwealth Court, Woodland Avenue and Shaw, Dogwood and Arnett, those are all in the same area down in South Frankfurt, Wood Hill and Tenderwood, Claxton, Witt and Letcher, Reich, Cliffside Clover, and Kentucky Avenue and Paul's Road. So our money went a long way this year. Prices are going up. We're going to be rebidding our contract coming up in the next couple of weeks, get that out to bid, and we expect prices to go up on our paving, of course, like everything else. So our resurfacing is funded by our municipal aid account, which we can use that money for any work in the right of way. So currently, we try to use it for sidewalks, paving, equipment like a dump truck and a pickup truck are both in our budget this year. This year, we're also going to be using that for our new RMT, which is Roadway Management Technology Program, that's going to help us start collecting data for the condition of our roads as well as tracking vehicles and gathering some data that we need to make this program work. So Bobby, can we slide back to the second slide, please, where it says the number, the dollar amounts?
Right there.
Yes, thank you. So our annual budget is typically about 250, so that's what we've got budgeted this year. Our total revenue, like I said, it fluctuates. It's based on the gas tax, and it's based on our community size, and that's how it's determined, but it's normally right around 500,000. So at this rate, with these current prices, and this is just rough numbers, we're probably paving every street in our system every 50 years. So without doing a lot of restoration work or a lot of work to extend the life of our pavement, you can see that that's not, that's not going to be sustainable. So we want to start doing some pavement preservation in the future to kind of stretch our dollars. But the goal would be a 20- to 25-year cycle, so that every street gets paved in that timeframe. In order to do that, just right now, without talking about preservation, that would cost 500,000 to 625,000 a year to get us on that regular cycle. We can go to the next slide. This is just looking at what we're proposing currently, and again, this list is always changing. It's a very fluid document based on the conditions of the roads and requests and the needs of the community. So this is just an example of what we're planning to do. You've got the Grand View Patricia Butler, Elkhorn, Lefoon, those are all in the area over off of East Main, or off of Georgetown. And then we've got Logan, Norton, Fowler, and River, and Murray, and those are, of course, down around Dolly Graham, Arlington and Arsenal, Lindsey, Hawkins, Ewing, Weber, Ewing Court and Patton Lane, those are all in South Frankfurt. Again, these are flexible, and the reason that these may change is if Columbia Gas or another utility is going to come in and tear up the area. We don't want to pave until they're done. So we have an alternate list. If you can slide to the next slide, please. And these, again, they're still flexible. These are just some examples of some areas that we might switch out if we needed to, in case some of the areas, for whatever reason, don't make it to the list. And then the last slide is just talking about our future program. How are we going to improve on what we're doing now? This roadway management technologies tool, I think is going to be a great tool for us. They're talking about probably in October, getting all of the hardware installed on our vehicles. They, what they do is we send them our fleet, we send them our GIS layers with our streets, and they kind of make recommendations on what data they think we need to collect and which vehicles would be the best ones to collect that data. So it may be, they may come back and say that we need to put a sensor on all of our street department vehicles. They may say all of our police cars even might, because they cover a lot of area. So that's kind of what we'll do, and we'll start collecting real-time data, and there will be a website we can go to, and we can see very clearly the red is a higher need and a worse condition than a green highlighted street on there. So it'll be real easy for us to identify the areas and prioritize our repairs. And I talked to them this afternoon about how the program's going to work, and they said, within probably 30 days of collecting data, we'll start to have a good idea and a good picture of what our system looks like. So it's, I was afraid we might have to collect this data for six months to a year to get a good idea, but they said, no, right after you get it going, it's going to start picking up on those conditions very quickly. So that will allow us to identify where we need to do some pavement preservation, which may be crack sealing, fog sealing, different technologies that aren't used a whole lot in this area right now, but I think would be good for us to look into, especially with our limited budget. So we'll start looking at some ways to extend the life, and then we may need to only do a 35-year cycle, or I don't know, I haven't run the numbers yet, but depending on how that goes, we might have a more concrete plan for what we need to do to keep our roads in good condition. So that's just a really brief overview of where we are and where I hope that we're going. So if you all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Katie?
Yeah.
What about, sometimes there's some, a road might be in pretty good shape, but there's some bad spots. Have you all looked into, because I know we have our own paver, some we're using to be able to patch, because there is a lot of need. There's a lot of roads that need to be paved. What can we do in there? Because when will the new, for the new bidding out for this take place? And is anything going to take place this fall?
Possibly. It's, it might be getting kind of late in the season, but I hope to have it out to bid this month with bids coming in early September. So that, you know, depending on the weather, probably leaves us a couple of months, depending on people's schedule, but the majority of it will probably be in the spring, I would say. But yeah, if there are areas that need to be patched, certainly our crews are capable of doing that. We've got the equipment. We've got what we need to do that, just fitting it into our schedule. We do have a couple of pretty narrow streets that are perfect for our in-house crews, so we've got those on our list. But yeah, there are, there are other options.
You know, we've gotten calls about Reed Drive, Athletic Drive, and Cold Harbor, so areas that maybe we can do something if this is not going to be ready for this fall, but there's other things that we can do.
Yeah, sure. There's certainly things we can do and dress up areas that need to be dressed up before they get a full resurface.
Could we also use this, because we have a lot of state roads in town, use this to send info to the state and say, hey, we need to look here, or?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and that's something we actually talked about on our call today, was to reach out to KYTC as well as the county and see if they have any interest in this and maybe partnering with us, and at least because we're going to get the data anyway. And so that might be a good partnership.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
And how do we, now we're going to use the technology to determine the condition of the roads. How do we do it now?
Right now, we just visually, and there was a project done probably eight years ago where they intentionally rated all of the streets in the city limits that we're responsible for, and gave them a number, 1 to 100. And we've been going off of that list, but just, it's not been updated in a while. So we either needed to update that list or do this program, and this seemed like a great option to get continuous ongoing data, so that it will reflect, hopefully, when we pave, you'll see those roads turn to, from red to green or something. So you'll see that immediately, and it'll just continue, so.
Are we still paving at the moment, or are we sort of finishing paving? I know I saw that Cold Harbor was on there. I know you and I spoke about that, and we've looked over pictures and stuff for Cold Harbor connected to Athletic Drive. But, so will that be in the next estimate that's coming up for the spring, or will we get to those bad spots that you and I spoke about a while back of maybe patching some areas before we do the full Cold Harbor all the way to MLK, only because they're still building, they've got large trucks that will continue to wear that down. So, and I agree with you, I think waiting to pave that area over there would be great, but patching up something, especially before homecoming, is that possible now?
Yeah, that's possible. Yeah, we did wrap up our contract with Flynn, who is currently under contract, but like I said, our in-house staff can look at spots. And like you say, we didn't want to repave it until all the heavy equipment was done, but if there are spot repairs that we can make, we can do that before, before the next contract is in place in the spring. So, yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah, I think they filled in that pothole right there, like the King turning on Athletic, no, the other side.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Eric Cockley. Give us a little update on the new parking advisory committee, what they're working on, and since we just recently launched this with our new parking operator, Laz, working.
Yeah, so I'll just start. The Parking Advisory Group has met one time. We actually just scheduled our second meeting for next Monday. We're trying to put together enough of the several items that we kind of had going on as part of that transition to this operator, and then moving back into our on-street parking enforcement, which we haven't really been doing. So Laz has transitioned on, taken over the accounts from SP Plus. They've been operating the garage since the beginning of July, and so they've kind of gotten everybody on board as far as that goes, and they've begun some work on the garage in terms of graffiti removal, things of that nature. So as we work on their transition, specific to the garage, we began talking about some of the physical improvements in the short one we can do, both to the garage itself. I'm expecting some quotes about some new lighting choices that we can do to get it better lit. Looking at some of our landscaping that needs a little love over there right now, I think Parks folks are actually, if they haven't already, are going to this week, do some very basic kind of cleanup. And what I'm hoping to do is probably look into having us procure a professional landscape crew to come out, replace some of that material, maybe do something, you know, native and super low maintenance, but get it to look right, so then Parks can spend as little time as possible maintaining that for us in the future. Once again, talking about graffiti removal, keeping the garage clean, lighting, and then also, you know, basic security stuff, so that we can share with the public as we try to encourage people to use the garage. Those things we're going to do to keep it clean, to keep it safe, you know, let them know at what frequency we expect to have Chief Bowman's folks, you know, reporting into the garage and going through there, and how frequently Laz's folks on the ground are going to be in and out of the garage. We've been working on amending our parking ordinances to reflect our new arrangement with this parking operator, and also to reflect how we're going to arrange our parking decisions and our active management of our parking downtown with that Parking Advisory Group. So, you know, currently, the ordinance as it's written really lays out like specifically what areas are to have parking and not, and all of that, and it's in that clunky ordinance form where anytime we change anything, as, you know, the reality on the ground changes, we would have to come back to you all for ordinances to be changed. So what we're trying to write into that, to work with this Parking Advisory Group, with our operator, with Chief Bowman, and with Laura, is to create what we're going to refer to as our sort of downtown parking manual. And that's going to talk about all the rules, the different parking zones, how we're going to deal with enforcement, any appeals process, and just general information about downtown parking. So we expect to have a basic outline for that and to work on some options for branding for downtown parking and for that manual to share at this Parking Advisory Group, and to share with them some other examples. We found some other cities' parking manuals that do similar things. A lot of them are from jurisdictions that are a lot larger than ours, so the manual is a lot more than what we need it to be. But that's kind of on our next thing, is get that amendment, the parking ordinance amendment, ready to get in front of the commission. I would like to say that could happen in September. I don't think that's too entirely optimistic. And then begin working on the parking manual with the Parking Advisory Group, begin working on, you know, building a website page for parking specifically to get information out, and to share some of this other stuff, hopefully in the next month or so with the public about what we're doing. We'll also hope to start moving as we transition back towards enforcement to begin that transition. I think we've talked before about starting with education and outreach, you know, where when we first get them back on the streets, interacting with our downtown parkers, it'll be more of a, you know, you get a, instead of a ticket, you're going to get a slip that's going to educate you about, hey, I've noticed you overparked. Here's what the rules are. Check out our website, and that kind of thing, as well as a parking amnesty program that we'll be discussing with the Parking Advisory Group, so we can hopefully get everybody on a clean slate to start, and then move forward as we transition through that educational period and back to actual parking enforcement and trying to manage that situation. I think that's generally sort of the five or six moving parts in where we are. Like I said, the next thing that you guys are probably going to see is that parking ordinance, and at that time, hopefully, we'll also have some level of a draft parking manual to at least share with you all, so you kind of know what that might look like, and obviously let you all know and share with the public as we move forward with any parking amnesty program, and that educational kind of outreach thing that we start. As I think I said a minute ago, I've talked to our operator last week and said that my goal, I think it's super optimistic, we're probably not going to get there, would be to start unrolling some of those things as we get into September, but certainly by October. It'd be nice this fall to move forward on the next few steps. So that's kind of where we are.
Thanks, Eric. Great job.
Thank you.
Next up, we'd like to welcome Vicki Berenberg up and speak briefly about our newly released African-American Historic Context Report for the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here just to let you know that this project that you've all so graciously financially assisted about 18 months ago with a match to the grant is. with a match to the grant is now complete. Hopefully, you received a link that will allow you to access the report online. I encourage you to check it out. It turned out to be quite a large project, more than I was anticipating when we initially discussed pursuing it. We've got over three hundred and fifty pages of documentation here about the history and heritage of African-Americans in Frankfurt. When we first decided to pursue this idea of, of doing this historic context, we had three intentions. We wanted to document better than we have existing and recognize the contributions that the Black community has made to Frankfurt's rich history and how that influenced the growth of our community over time. We also wanted to evaluate the built environment, including all of the buildings, sites, structures, objects, things that were created that are associated with that historic narrative and evaluate them for their significance. And part of the reason for doing that is to identify new resources that are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. We have many such designations in the community, including historic districts. But up to this point, we have not really included African-Americans as part of that process. This will allow us to pursue new designations for things. There are a number of things that are listed in the back of the report that have been evaluated as eligible for the National Register. This will build awareness of those resources and their significance. And it will allow us to go back to the existing nominations we have, particularly, particularly for historic districts, and expand on the stories to make sure that we're being inclusive and including that historic heritage. And then finally, we wanted to be an educational tool for the community, something that can be used possibly in the classroom, something that people can just read and enjoy at their own leisure. And possibly something that we can use to expand areas of heritage tourism that are related to the African-American community. There are a number of those, those things that are listed in the back with significance are probably going to be very relevant to that discussion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Hopefully, you saw the newspaper article this weekend, which I thought was very well done. I'm excited that they're actually going to do a series of articles so that we can kind of expand on the story and get it out to the public. This covers the period from seventeen nineties up through nineteen seventy. And I think it's really great and it's really aligns well with our strategic plan in terms of meeting those goals for equity and inclusion.
So is this on the website right now?
Yes.
So people can access it there, which is great.
It's a large file. We didn't want to compress it too much because we wanted the pictures to be very clear. That I think they're a really important part of the story. Thanks to the Historical Society that worked with that, with us to allow the incorporation of so many images. So it may take a little while to load when you're loading it, but it is available and accessible.
Well, that's great, and I want to thank you and every, everybody for all their work on this. I was able to go to one of the presentations at the library and it was, it was great and a bit overwhelming. And it's, you know, it's a lot to take in and it's good to have all this history out there and to see, you know, how we can take this and just keep rolling with it. So, and I'm glad, like you said, the state journal is going to do some spots on it and continue to share it. I know a few, you know, we all shared it on Facebook recently when it was released. And a lot of people just expressed how great it was to take a look at. And so it's a great thing we're doing. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thanks. Before we ask Tommy Russell, our Emergency Management Director, to come up, I just wanted to say a quick thanks to many of our city employees who've supported flood victims on their own or as part of the city's response. Just want to mention Ray Richardson, who's helped cook thousands of meals with Operation Barbecue Relief. Kim Wayne Scott in Finance had organized donations. And I know there's probably many, many others, individuals who've organized it. Also want to thank our Frankfurt firefighter sergeant, Cody Rich, and Captain Casey Watts, and our police officers, Austin King and Michael Martin, who went down just over the weekend and helping K Y E M do some assessments of some bridges and support them in their efforts. I know there's probably others, I'm sorry if I missed anybody else, but those who I know about. So Tommy, would you like to come up and also talk about that houseboat removal?
Good afternoon, there y'all. So I've got two things. One is a local project here. And then the other will be just a quick update on, on East Kentucky to see what we're, what's coming out of there. And since Bobby's got these pictures up, we'll just start with this local project first. Twenty seventeen, Ms. Ross, I'm thinking. We did this project, the city put in forty, twenty thousand dollars, the county put in twenty thousand dollars. We identified abandoned boats, docks, just trash on the river. I think we ended up picking up sixty tons of debris and removing it from the river. So far, we've had a very clean riverbank still in Franklin County, so this is, this has lasted. I was down in the lower pool on a possible drowning and I saw one little bitty junky aluminum boat, maybe ten feet long. Was the only boat I saw down there. This boat, and I'm sure you all have had phone calls on this, there were two boats tied up above the West Plaza Connector Bridge, or the East-West Connector Bridges. One was moved, the other one sank before they could get it untied evidently in the, and you can see where it's, what the high water has left of that. So that hole is still up there. My ask is that the Kentucky River Authority has a dredge boat that comes upriver every year. Most of the time, it's in July, but because of high water, it's delayed. This time, it'll be sometime in August. And while they're here, I was thinking it'd be a good time for us to get that hull out of the water and take it away. I was going to ask for the city to split the cost with the county. I, I make a presentation Friday with fiscal court. I can't imagine the price being more than five or six thousand dollars total, three thousand dollars apiece. And I'm sure, I've talked to several of y'all about this boat and this hull and what was up there and what it is. It's, it's actually sitting on state property right between plant board property and the bridge. So if we don't do it, it's not going to get done. I went and testified before a senate subcommittee many years ago, and there is no authority for abandoned boats on the river. If we don't take care of our own, nobody's going to take care of it. So I just think that this, if the timing is good, it shouldn't cost us very much money. And it will get rid of an isle right across from Big Eddie Road. And that's, you know, everybody that goes on this river travels upriver, Big Eddie Beach and Mo Hallin, and that's what they see. It'll make my phone quit ringing and I would appreciate if y'all could help me.
And our emails.
So, yeah, we've had a lot of conversation and calls about this. I just think it's an easy one for us. And the, I assume the dredge boat is still coming because of high water. I'm going to High Bridge to a Kentucky River Authority meeting tomorrow, and that's a conversation to be had up there. I've got the pricing and everything and Ms. Ross, we've looked at the contract. I've got another one coming, so it'll be, it'll be a simple thing, I think. If y'all are amenable to this.
As soon as you get confirmation, especially from the county too, we'd be happy to send the information to the B O C.
Yeah, so.
When was your meet? I'm sorry, that's what I was going to say before she spoke. When was, when was the meeting again that you're going to?
Friday.
This Friday.
The River Authority is tomorrow and Friday is the fiscal court meeting. So I'm to make a presentation there also. I'll make the same ask of them to split the cost.
Do we need a motion?
Can we go and make a motion here? I guess we can go ahead. I make a motion that we split the cost with the county for this boat removal in August.
Do we need a motion on this because of the size?
We actually don't need a motion.
Because it's under a certain amount?
Because it's under twenty, and I, I think the goal is obviously to, to hopefully split it with the county. If for any reason they decline to do so, then I think Tommy's hope is that you all will be okay with just, with just spending money ourselves if they.
That's why I thought after the meeting on Friday, I would come back to you all.
And we do think that it would stay underneath of six thousand?
I, I just can't imagine, I mean.
But it would definitely fall underneath of the twenty thousand with just a little.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely to remove that.
Absolutely.
If it's more, then we can, we'll take it up on, if it's significantly more, then we'll take it up in August.
Right, right. And I'll, and I'll get to the crane guys when they get in the pool to take a look at it. But, you know, two hours of crane time, working on that, it won't take very long. If we can get rid of it right there at Old Lawrenceburg Road, get it up the ramp, it'll save us a lot of money.
I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Update on, just a quick update for on East Kentucky. We're starting to get sit, situation reports from K Y M and also from FEMA. The FEMA reports are very comprehensive, about forty-five pages long. The K Y M reports are not quite as long. And as soon as we determined that they're not, that they're public knowledge and not for official use only, I was going to send you all one of them so you could look. But, you know, just as an update, there are ten shelters open now, I think, and they're housing about four hundred. Mayor, we were in with the Red Cross, four hundred and eighty-five people or something like that. There are two hundred and forty-five National Guardsmen still working in East Kentucky. I think there were three towns that the water systems were, were non-functioning. Several things going on. What we need to remember is that the flood, this flooding event will not be a short-term event. You know, right now, we're at two weeks on this thing, which is the standard, you know, ask for volunteers. You know, those people have to go home sometime, and hardly anybody ever stays two weeks, you know. Our guys went for two nights to go up and do that. I finally got a K Y M request. And part of this conversation was, everybody wants to help. I understand everybody wants to help. You know, I've had a lot of ask, how come we're not deployed? How come we haven't gone to East Kentucky? Well, to self-deploy is, is pretty much making yourself not as much as part of the solution as you think. So, you know, if you self-deploy and nobody knows you're coming and you get there, then you, somebody's got to feed you, somebody's got to water you, somebody's got to find a place for you to stay. So we've gotten a lot of requests from different agencies. And I, we've talked to department heads and they know that if they get a request that they would like to try to honor, we've put together a list of questions that they should answer. You know, who gets me through checkpoints? Who's got the authority? Is there fuel available, you know, insurance-wise? Do you have a place for us to stay? All of those questions will be answered. And if we think they're, they're the right answers, then we'll deploy and, and send assets that way, you know. Frankfurt is a, a big little town and sometimes assets are limited that we can get away from, you know. We have to take care of our own first. It was just kind of to let you all know that, yes, we're looking for missions. We would take some missions, entertain the missions, but we're not going to self-deploy and then we're not going to, not leave options available for us to take care of our own here. And I think that's the, that's the biggest thing for everybody to understand. We all want to go. They want to know what you can do the most. Mayor, what did the Red Cross ladies say, you know?
Donate cash.
Cash is king, you know. They know exactly what they need when they get a dollar bill and what they can spend it on. So my suggestion right now is to send cash, you know. Find that website or whatever you want to do or whatever you want to donate to and, and send that money up there. Any questions? I'm trying to be as quick as I can. Yeah, that, that's just a flyer that was put out right off the bat about talking about not self-deploy, so.
Do you have a particular link that you know that is secure, that is going to the Red Cross or the other people that you have verified?
Yes.
That we can share maybe on our webpage?
And I'll get that out to you all.
Does the community know that that's a good thing?
When I, when we determine this CitRep report, I'll send that with that also.
Okay, that'd be great.
We've got it out there.
At least we know, because I know there's a lot of different people asking. We want to make sure that we're getting it to the people.
Yes, yes, there are. And there are a lot of agencies deployed downrange right now, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last staff report. Well, welcome back, Sean Pickens. Multiple updates on Dolly Graham Park and proposed no mow areas. Mow, I can't even say that right. No mow areas if it's the well of the board. And also extending days and hours at Juniper Hills and at the Dolly Graham splash pad.
Thank you, thank you. What you see here on the screen is a, like basically the blueprint of the new restroom for Dolly Graham. They're working on a, a dot or a picture of what it's going to actually look like. I don't have that yet. But by the voting meeting, before the voting meeting, I'll have it with the memo, so you'll kind of have a really good representation of what it's going to look like physically on the outside. It will look somewhat similar to this. It won't look exactly like this. I'll pass it around. But it'll be kind of the same style, maybe a little different color, maybe a little different roofing, but it'll look similar to this. Real quick, it'll have a men's, a women's, and a family restroom included. And it'll have a, a sizable storage area. We need storage room for splash pad chemicals, storage area for the South Frankfurt Community Center for their summer program, for their activity pieces and things like that that they can keep in there. They usually keep a refrigerator to keep drinks cold and stuff for their program during the summer. So though this big white area that you see, kind of the L shape behind the bathrooms, that'll all be storage back in there. So there'll be plenty of storage here as well. So this building came in under budget. We budgeted three hundred thousand for it. It came in around just shy of two hundred thousand. That's construction, that's installation, that's everything, top to bottom. And we put in a little buffer, some contingency money just in case, you know, how things, things go. There's always something random that happens. So we'll have this, we'll have some more details on this for you at the voting meeting coming up here in two weeks. And if you guys approve, we'll, we'll move forward. It's already in the budget. We'll move forward. They'll start construction on it. And if things go well, we could, particularly, it could be done this, this fall. Or at the latest for spring when the, when the park opens up next year. Any questions on the bathroom or move on to the next? Okay, thank you. No mow areas. There has been some, some interest from the commission to look at areas in parks for no, to reduce mowing and reduce maintenances, reduce lawnmower use, gas, whatnot. After some conversations with the city manager and with staff, our plan is to kind of start small early on, pick a few trial areas. We're worried a little bit, you know, into the future, if we start all full-fledged and just start not mowing a lot of the areas that we potentially could, then they're kind of in high visible areas and we're worried about community complaints and things like that. As well as if we let it grow up for three or four months and then if we have to go back in and get it back maintained, we're probably going to spend way more main hours and, and equipment used doing that than if we would have just kept it maintained in the first place. So we're going to kind of start small and just kind of work our way and just do a few trial areas. So this is East Frankfurt Park. So the small area in red there by the baseball fields is an open area. Above there, towards the maintenance facility, there's another area. I didn't get it on the map here, but there's another few acres to the north there. That area shaded in yellow is where the old swimming pool was at East Frankfurt. That's a, that's a potential area that we're looking at, but that's also a pretty highly visible area. And we have future plans in the master plan for improvements in that area. So, so we're, we're kind of taking a look at that as a possible area to reduce mowing. Capital View, if you can go to the next slide, Bobby?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay. Capital View is probably where we have the most, as he's pulling that up. Where the old employee house was at Capital View, that's kind of back out of the way. There we go. Those two, two large red shaded, about probably, probably fifteen acres, give or take, of kind of back areas of Co, or of Capital View that we don't use much right now. There is future, future expansion opportunities there, but that'll be kind of far down the road. So, so those are two areas that we're looking at there. And also the area shaded in yellow, as you enter into Capital View, there's a big, nice grass area that, but we're looking at that, it's right as you go into the park. So we're not real keen on doing that because that's your first impression as you're going to the park. But that's really the only other area in Capital View that if we wanted to reduce even more mowing that was seen there, then we have to do it right there at the entrance, so. Then at Cove Spring Park, we're doing, already doing a lot of non-mowing at the top, the large field at the top. We only mow that once or twice a year anyway. Um, and then there's a small park, next to the small parking lot there, there's another area there that we don't already mow. So, most of Cove already is not being mowed. So, so those are kinda some of the trial areas. We're gonna give it, give it a trial for the rest of this year. Um, and then as we move into the spring next year, we'll have a little more time to research and see, kinda see what people, get some more community feedback and get feedback from you guys to kinda see how we want, what direction we wanna go there. So, uh, any questions or comments or direction moving forward or?
I'm sure Ann Marie's.
I was sort of, um, wondering, um, in like high-vis areas, if we could plan to put down like native seeds or wild flower seeds, because I think people would change their mind when they see how beautiful it could be.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that to see how we could get that done, make sure we do that properly. Um, we would probably need to get some help to do that, you know, get contract with somebody just so we do it right in the first place. Um, so yeah, that's, we're definitely looking at that as an option.
Great, thank you.
Even in these areas that are highly visited as well. For pollinators, bird habitat, any kinda wildlife habitat, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Ms. Rosen?
Yes, um, that's on, in my opinion, it's pretty much like what Lisa just said of, um, planting some seeds to grow things that would have more business of more interest. And also I know some techniques that are used is to trim the area right next to the sidewalk and then it looks like a presentation more than just a leftover.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
Yeah. I agree with starting small and, and kinda getting people to a new aesthetic of what, what is good.
Okay.
Is it, are, are all no mow, all no mow zones?
So hard to say.
Pollinator habitats as well?
We're not gonna call it that. We're gonna.
Yeah, can we, cause I always see it as a pollinator habitat.
We're gonna make some signage. We're gonna do less expensive signage starting out and we're gonna play with the verbiage and call them wildlife habitat zones.
Right.
Pollinator zone.
Pollinator zone or something like that. We're gonna work with, yeah. We won't call it no mow zone.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just.
That is my, yeah, that's my, as we move forward, can we make sure that?
That's the inner working, internal working.
It's easier to sell that.
Yeah, yeah, that's how we're gonna, yeah.
I would live next to a habitat or habitat.
Then a no mow.
Butterfly.
Then a no mow zone, I might be.
No mow zone.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
All right, thank you. We'll have more information as we, as we roll along too. So. Um, then the last thing, uh, extended hours at Juniper Hill Aquatic Center. It's been an awesome summer up there. We have had a huge influx of folks up there. Um, right now, we have, we should, knock on wood, cross fingers, everything in place to stay open. Not, not the entire aquatic center. We're gonna keep the lap swimming pool open past Labor Day and we're hoping for at least two to three weeks. We're gonna strive for October first. Um, but we're gonna plan for the, for two or three weeks. Um, and we'll see how far we get with staffing and materials and things like that. So, uh, the pool will be open for lap swimming, water aerobics. Uh, we probably won't have swim lessons with kids being back in school, maybe some adult swim lessons and stuff. But we, but we should be open, um, well into September. And the same thing with the splash pad at Dolly Graham. Uh, we're gonna try to keep it open through October first. We had planned to do that anyway. Uh, as long as the weather stays decent, we don't have anything crazy, uh, we should be able to stay open through October first uh, at the splash pad as well. So. Any other questions?
Discussion or questions?
Oh.
Ms. Rosen, one more?
Yes, I know schools started on, uh, August third and did you, you had decline in pool usage already or?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. Yeah, so as soon as, about a week before any schools go back, we always see a decline.
And Sean, aren't you, when are we gonna start opening just on the weekends?
Yes, we're, we'll be open during the week, this week, and then starting next Monday, we'll be open weekends only through Labor Day. And then, then we'll be open lap pool only, um, all the way through, hopefully through October first, but two to three weeks at least.
So does that mean lap pool is open, um, during the week?
We're, we're trying to work to address that. Um, right now with the kids going back to school, um, we probably won't be able to, we're gonna try to be open on some of those days, but we just don't know what day, cause the staffing is so flexible right now. They could, they're coming and going, so we're not sure. So it'll kinda be, uh, as we go, we'll announce when we're open for lap swimming.
Okay, and so do we have a special website just for the pool?
Yes.
Use or, okay, so people could easily figure out?
Yes, and on social media as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah.
Yes, so because we, most of our high schoolers are lifeguards, that's why it's really hard in, in doing that. So, is there a way that, is there a way that we can work with the school systems and see about like an internship or something like that? I know they have some kind of internship, so is there a way that we could work with them to maybe have a couple of those to do that during those couple of hours for that internship or whatever program that they have of working hours, that maybe we could sign up for that? Um, and they could come and do a couple of hours and then go back to school, but they're getting the, that hour of work. I think it's called something, not intern, but it's something else. It's like a work-ready program or something.
Okay.
But they do a couple of hours there. So that may be something that if we can have a couple of the high schoolers say, hey, you know, we wanna sign up, come and do a couple of hours, go back to school to finish their day.
Yeah.
That may be something that we look into.
I can check with the prep schools and see if that's an option.
My other question, uh, I guess it, it's not particular, I guess about Dolly Graham Park or the Dolly Graham bathroom, but, um, we were just looking into the bathrooms period, um, down at the farmer's market.
Yeah, we haven't gotten too far with that. There's, there's gonna be a lot more to that with the flood wall and a limited space down there and that being, uh, state property.
Mm-hmm.
So just a lot more to that and we just haven't delved into that just yet.
Okay, yeah, I just, I guess I could bring it up.
Yeah.
In the O business, if you, bring it up underneath the O business, um, and then we can discuss about that. But just to put that in your head so you can think about that for a minute, cause I have a few more questions.
Yeah, that, that'll be, that'll be quite a bit more challenging than Dolly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you all. Oh, and, uh, this Friday night, high school swim party.
Yes.
At Juniper Hill for all high schools is free, so.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping that going.
Absolutely.
All right, and we'll move on to discussion items.
Thank you. First off, I'm happy to welcome Darlene Thomas of Greenhouse Seventeen. Uh, Greenhouse Seventeen is one of the organizations who has received a annual subsidy from the Board of Commissioners. Um, you know, we are working to make sure that all organizations get an opportunity to present before the Board of Commissioners, talk a little bit more about what they do and have an opportunity to discuss and you all to have questions about, um, their work and how our subsidy supports you.
Hey, you see him in the middle? Yay. You all teach cats more than I do in a day, um, for sure, sitting here through the meeting. It's one thing I enjoy about Frankfurt is the way we, um, work together as a community. I live here, so it's particularly important to me. I live two streets back from here. Um, my name is Darlene Thomas and I'm the Executive Director of a program called Greenhouse Seventeen. Greenhouse Seventeen is a domestic violence, state sanctions, domestic violence program that serves seventeen counties in central Kentucky. Hence the name, Greenhouse Seventeen, the seventeen for the counties that we serve. And the greenhouse is really based on the philosophy of our organization, programs that we provide. And, um, as you'll see, you can just play the slides, there's nothing important to them. They kinda just rotate. But it'll give you a visual of what we look like. We actually are on a forty-acre horse farm. On the very, uh, the shelter component of our agency, um, is on the very far side of Fayette County. Um, kinda nestled between Bourbon County, Clark County, and Fayette, right there in that corner. And on the forty acres, we have a, um, forty-two-bed emergency shelter for domestic violence victims and their children. We serve men, women, and children who are victims of intimate partner violence from all seventeen counties, uh, including of course Franklin, Franklin County as one of those counties. On site for the shelter on the forty acres, we do all kinds of work, but two really unique things that we've been known nationally and internationally for, uh, that I hope you all will be proud of is we run two social enterprises, Cottage Industries. So we raise our own flowers. We raise a lot of food that we consume in-house, so I have a chef on staff that helps with farm-to-table. And, uh, survivors get to earn stipends when they live in our shelter. We're the only domestic violence program in the nation that actually pays people to live with us in their time of crisis. And it's a way to look at economic justice issues as people are trying to restart their lives and move from crisis to self-sufficiency. This has just become a part of our philosophy of our agency. Our flower industry, we sell CSAs, community-supported agriculture. We sell about a hundred and fifty, uh, CSAs a year um, for flowers where people receive sixteen weeks of flowers that survivors plant, that survivors help grow and weed and take care of and then harvest and then put together beautiful bouquets that go back out in the community. Um, we also have handmade by survivor products that we make, which are soaps and lip balms and bath salts and, um, candles, all created, designed, made, and named by survivors, uh, which is really important. So the work is not so much about our cottage industries, although it's really cool work, I have to admit it. It's not anything I ever dreamt of doing. I've been doing this work thirty-three years. And when I went to start this shelter in Lexington or this domestic violence program, I, I was not thinking of Cottage Industries at that time. But what really happened and we stumbled into it, when there was a hard financial crisis and I thought we're sitting on forty acres, we need to think about how we model self-sufficiency as an organization. We try to teach self-sufficiency to our survivors, but yet we as nonprofits don't often follow our own lead. So how do we also become tax-paying, productive members of our communities in role modeling? We continue to earn more money and, and are striving and have long-term goals so that one day I won't be coming to the cities of Frankfurt or our state or community. Hopefully we'll be working towards a very self-sufficiency we try to teach. So it's been a way to model and emulate for survivors what that means. But more than anything, what our program has done is it's really given us, given a sense of purpose and belonging. Uh, in the old days in this work, um, we used to hide people away, right? In shelters, you don't tell where they are, you don't dare speak of it, it's not safe. And with that, I get that, why we did that many years ago. But today, with the resources, there are other ways to keep people safe. And what it kinda aided to and aids to is the shame, this embarrassment, this humiliation that something's wrong with me, that I have to be hidden away somewhere. So in our organization, although we do keep people safe and we do state-of-the-art, I have security all over the facility, you know, we, we definitely look at that as a high priority. But what we also see is that our survivors are very human and they need interaction. They need their ministers to come out and see them. They need family to be able to come visit. They need to bring their animal with them so they don't leave them behind, um, to somebody that might hurt their animal. So any barrier that we can possibly remove is the philosophy of Greenhouse Seventeen. It's our job to remove that. We don't have a length of stay, it's really individual. We meet people where they are, not where they, we think they should be, uh, kinda situation. We don't limit their abilities, um, to work or go places or move around in their communities as they see fit, but we do intensive safety planning all the time, day in and day out some days, to make sure that survivors think about their own safety as they go back to work or their children go back to school. They, you know, reintroduce themselves back to their own families and communities. Uh, that's the shelter part with a lot of support groups and counseling and interventions along the way. But in our seventeen counties, we're also present. Uh, so for here, in Franklin, we are here the week for support groups and counseling. Uh, because of COVID, we've been able to really expand support groups because we had to adapt with the rest of the world and figure out how to do support groups online. We've never done that kinda work before and our attendance continues to grow because we are online. It's safer sometimes for people in their own homes or wherever they are to kinda talk about their situation than having to find a babysitter and come to group, those kinda things. So we try to be more and more accessible. Uh, last year in, in Franklin County, we served about a hundred and sixty, uh, survivors and their children. I don't know the total number of children. This is non-residential based. Uh, and we provided two hundred crisis calls where we did some kinda intervention. We provided two hundred and eighteen personal advocacy services, which means we helped them with some type of support, financial support, you know, um, reaching out on their behalf, making contacts, maybe contacting police department or county attorney's office or local victim advocates in order to help kinda mitigate or help them navigate the systems that they were having to deal with or face. So that's kind of our job, is this personal advocacy. Um, and then we did seven hundred and forty-one sessions of just emotional support counseling for individuals. Uh, and then we helped shelter over a hundred and twenty-eight. So they either came to emergency shelter or we helped put them in other safe housing. Um, we do have some pretty comprehensive housing options. Our real goal is to keep people out of shelter. If we can keep you housed safely in your own community, with your own schools and your own faith and your own support systems, that is the best-case scenario. Where in the old days, you had to go to shelter before you got help. Really, we're trying to keep you out of shelter, because by the time you come to shelter, you've lost everything and you're showing up with two trash bags. And we have to start all over from square one with housing, furniture, everything that you might need to begin a new, uh, as you're on that journey for, you know, for the survivors. Um, and then we did about a hundred and seventy-seven criminal justice services, which is predominant court advocacy. We don't do criminal court because it's already covered by another entity through our county attorney's office, but we do civil court. So we do protective order court to make sure that victims are not alone in that process. We do know that when a victim's advocate is pre- present, they do not drop protective orders, only less than ten percent of the time. Without an advocate in court every time, they drop about eighty percent of the time. So there's a huge impact. Most people don't understand what they filed and by the time they get to court, they just want it all to go away and they want to drop until they understand, um, how it can work for them, not necessarily against them, and not even necessarily against the person they filed against. It can kind of, you know, even the playing field a little bit and empower both parties to know clearly what to expect and what not to expect in those situations. So, uh, that's kinda the who that we are and how we go about some of our basic philosophy, uh, of the work. Do you all have any questions for me?
Ms. Rose?
Darling Thomas?
Darling Thomas, yes.
Ms. Thomas, thank you so much for the work you do in this state. Um, as someone who can speak from a point of privilege, not ever, I haven't been in that situation or being a victim myself, um, from this seat, I try to empathize as much as possible and I can only imagine what it would be like to find myself in that situation. But I would imagine that the services that you offer and the truly getting someone the help they need and the ability, like you said, to, it's kind of the teach an individual, you know, get, give a fish, teach, teach someone to fish, you know, analogy, and I love that, that that's the focus and the core of your program. Uh, so thank you for that. My question would be, right now, and if, if I am a citizen of Frankfurt, Franklin County and I need your services, uh, how would, where would we find you or how, how would I direct somebody to you, the organization? Uh, is it, yeah, can they walk twenty-four-seven, get in touch or, yeah, just?
Twenty-four-seven, never close, you know. And the whole time during COVID, when all of my colleagues are talking about working for home, we're like, what are you talking about? We don't have the privilege to shut our doors. Because during COVID, it has probably been in my long career of doing this work, the hardest two years of my career. I, I don't even know how to explain how difficult it's been to try to figure out how to run a shelter on top of a, a pandemic where people were being told to shelter at home, safe and at home, and it was not safe and at home for domestic violence victims. But there was so much misinformation that victims thought that the police would not come to their home because of COVID. Victims really thought that they couldn't go to the hospital to get help for their injuries because COVID was so prevalent, it would've been more dangerous to go there. And that shelters were closed and that the courts were closed. So much misinformation really led to a heightened level. In this past year, we've seen a eighty-two percent increase in domestic violence homicides in the state of Kentucky than the previous year. So it, the pandemic has really hit on two fronts and in the home for intimate partner violence. So to find us, we are twenty-four-seven, we never close our doors. We, you, uh, can call us. It's one eight hundred five four four two oh two two, um, which is Greenhouse Seventeen. If you Google Greenhouse Seventeen, it will get you right to our crisis line, not a problem. We work closely with local programs here and kinda share and help each other, um, where there might not be quite as many resources for domestic violence. Um, you, you do have a wonderful local program that does try to help with domestic violence victims, but it's small, it's limited. So we help. Where they have a really high-risk case, we take that, cause I have twenty-four-hour staff, um, fully trained, certified in intimate partner violence, like they, they know how to do that. Where a lot of times programs are more volunteer-run or only have on-call staff, well, that may not be sa- safe for people living there if, if there's an abuser actively seeking them. So partnering, law enforcement should know us pretty well cause I train law enforcement all the time. Um, but mainly people find us through friends and family and/or the courts when they file a protective order. That's how. they file a protective order. That's how they find us. But you can find us easy, Greenhouse Seventeen, all kinds of things will pop up at the number most of all. And all of our services are free, all of our services are confidential. We're a unique kind of setting because unlike advocates that work within the legal justice system for counties, not just this, but every county in the state that has them, we are a confidential agency, which means we do not share information with anybody without, not even a court order. I will move to quash any requests for documents if a victim does not want their information released. Unlike other advocates who kind of collaborate and are bridge builders between the two, not that we're bridge burners, we are not, we definitely build bridges, but we also stand firm with the survivor because without that, survivors won't come and won't call if they think that you'll share their information freely. So we work really hard to make sure that they feel safe and competence in us as a confidential agency. It's important to survivors. That was a really long answer, a short question.
Commissioner Rosen, did you have a question, a comment?
You're muted.
You're on mute.
We can't hear you, Commissioner Rosen.
I'm sorry, I forgot I turned it off. Your really long answer covered my questions of how people find you and how everything works, so thank you for that. One question about what percentage of the people who are there are from Franklin County or?
Oh, they actually come to shelter?
You're right. Yeah, or that you help, or I'm just wondering how prominent Franklin County is in your entire operation.
Well, you know, I'd have to go back. I do not have the percentages off the top of my head. The last time I looked, Franklin County is probably our fifth-largest county we serve of the seventeen. But I serve a lot of very rural communities like Lincoln and Powell and Estill. So Franklin County is a higher population. So Fayette County, of course, would be one of the biggest, and then Clark, then Georgetown, then Nicholasville, then Danville, and Frankford was right in there. So fifth or sixth of our seventeen counties.
Okay. Well, that does make a good idea. Thank you.
That's good information.
Well, thank you all. You have supported us from the very beginning. When I was a baby and first came and moved here and everything, you all stepped to the plate when we weren't even sure what we were going to look like as a brand-new organization after the former one was forced to close. So we appreciate your longtime support. Most everything we do for Franklin County, we don't even really look at the shelter or how much that may cost or don't. Mainly, what we use money for here locally is group materials support and it's direct financial support. So when a survivor needs shoes to be able to go to work, because they need a special shoe, if they need a deposit for housing, then we can help for that. So we pretty much utilize the money that you give us to go right back to the assistance to local residents.
Thank you so much, Darlene. I really also enjoyed hearing about the work in social enterprises. When I worked in Ukraine, that was something that several cities partnered with nonprofits to do social enterprises, hiring formerly incarcerated women, teaching them skills to get them employed. So I think that's really wonderful and innovative. I wanted to ask you, where else do you get your funding? How, you know, besides some of the revenue from that, what are your other revenue supports?
So I, I'm pretty active in seeking funding from multiple sources. I probably have twenty-seven major funding streams. The state is a funding stream for us. The VOKA, which is the Violence of Crime Act funding, which is non-taxpayer federal money, it's collections from the bad people in the world. When the federal government confiscates is our largest funder by far. It's about one point two million dollars of our total funding. And then beyond that, it's foundations, cities, local communities, United Ways. And then I really, we look for funding and opportunities even beyond our state because of the way that we do the work. So I'm always tickled when we get money from somewhere like New York or Minnesota or whatever, that we're bringing into Kentucky and locally, just because of the type of work we're doing. We fall under foundations that aren't just all Kentucky-based. But it also helps us look at and become known more nationally, which then lends more opportunity, which we hope, we just started a partnership with Altech. This past year, Altech actually hired a full-time staff person to do nothing but work with us on our cottage industries in order to build those with the goal of really expanding the business components and providing living wage opportunities to survivors down the road, because that's who we want to run these. We want it to be survivors, not me. I run nonprofits, not for-profits, right? I really want to teach those skills. We want survivors to be led by them and create down the road so that it's totally self-sufficient and all the money comes back into the organization to help future survivors in their journey to self-sufficiency as well. And Altech has very much believed in our capacity to make this happen. And so we create partnerships wherever we can and they're worldwide, not just Lexington. They're worldwide. We get a lot of support across the world from them, through them. So we partner where it's advantageous to help survivors.
Well, I think we need to invite you back to, we have a goal to work with a lot of our nonprofits to build capacity about fundraising and partnering, and you have some great examples.
I would be happy to help.
Since you live just a couple blocks away, we'd love to have you come back.
I do just live two blocks right behind us, directly behind us. Yes, and I would be happy to. I do a lot of that work in Ohio and other places, helping organizations start to rethink and reimagine who they are and how they communicate with their community. So we raise a lot of money as well in order to meet our budget. I'm raising almost twenty percent of our entire budget just in cash without a fundraiser. So we don't have a major fundraiser for our organization. Because they're hard to run when you're a small program. So anyway, I can help, I'm happy to.
Great information. Thank you, Darlene.
Well, you all have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, thank you so much.
Our next discussion item, I want to welcome back Eric Cockley and also want to thank Laura Ross and Eric Cockley for their extensive work on proposing ideas and policies, programs to address blighted properties in our community. And I know this has been a priority for the commission for several years and also one of the strategic plan priorities under economic development, one of the strategies to address this. So really excited to hear your presentation and tell us a little bit more about what y'all have been working on.
So we are, after four years off and on while we go through other crises and priorities, finally getting where we think we're close to hopefully bringing an ordinance to you guys following this discussion. And this is going to be a little bit more probably detail-oriented, but similar to what we talked about several months ago in terms of the broad outline. So really happy that we've gotten this far and hopefully can put in place a program to do some of the things we've been talking about. So just going back to the last time we had this discussion, you know, we talked a lot about the different challenges with code enforcement, with encouraging property maintenance and having folks invest in their homes. Just wanted to remind you about that discussion we had about the sort of breaking your three tiers of housing down. The top third being that, that third that essentially needs no assistance. Those are folks that have the means to do it and are choosing to invest in their homes. And that's what we'd love to see, the middle third. Some folks are maintaining their homes, maybe they have other projects they could invest in, but it could use a little help, a little incentivization to perhaps get them motivated to do it quickly and to go ahead and maybe pull that trigger on, you know, repainting the house that they've been talking about doing for years, they just haven't quite gotten to it. And we've had other grant programs and things of that nature, I think that we've talked about before, that are really great for that third. Both of those top thirds are also benefit by the fact that generally because the maintenance of those structures has been reasonably conducted, they still are getting a return on investment. When folks either buy or invest in the homes that they already owned, the return on investment makes sense, hence that's why they actually, generally speaking, do it. The bottom third is our problem, right? The bottom third may not have a return on investment that makes sense to do some of those improvements because they've sat and been neglected for so long. One of the other problems with the bottom third that is a reason that a lot of our other tools that we're going to talk about tonight don't work for it is because one of the biggest problems is that many times they're abandoned properties and they're either owned by folks that are deceased, owned by, you know, companies that are out of state that bought a tax bill, or other entities that mean most of our methods of motivating as though it's a normal homeowner just aren't going to be effective. So, as I mentioned, we need to think of another way to try to take a bite of that apple. This is sort of the menu, if you will, of some of the different tools we have, general nuisance code enforcement, our code enforcement board, its role, lien holder notification system, delinquent taxes, our abandoned properties ordinance list, liens and foreclosures, and then ultimately the tail end of our code enforcement procedure, which ends up with charges in criminal court with the county attorney and then also our tax moratorium program. So we're just going to go through each of these real quick and kind of talk about how they work and why they do and don't. So the nuisance code is just that. That's our nuisance code, it's a set of regulations that folks in my office use to interact with the community in terms of property maintenance violations, both with maintenance of the structure as well as their property, whether it's rubbish, garbage, junk vehicles, things of that nature. The code gives us what rules are in place, what the process is for enforcing those rules, how do people appeal to us if they don't agree with some action we've taken against them, and the timeframes for how long we're supposed to wait for particular things of that nature. So what are some of the pros? It gives us the ability to issue notices of violation and ultimately citations, which also give us the authority to levy fines for inaction, which for many situations allows us to coerce people into doing something about whatever the problem is. Another pro is it with some of the issues, we're able to, regardless of hearing back from the property owner, solve the problem ourselves. The best example of that probably is with grass. You know, we can fairly quickly, not as quickly as I'm sure a lot of people would like, but within a couple of weeks, go from sending you notice to going ahead and going, well, you didn't do it, so we'll mow it and we take care of it. One of the cons is that some of those property owners that we've talked about in the bottom third and other particularly derelict property owners in the middle third that are just absolutely bound and determined to ignore us and are unconcerned by liens being placed on their property, that leaves us with very little options. So the code enforcement board, and when we talk about code enforcement, people focus on the board a lot, but its activity and role is actually fairly limited. The only thing the code enforcement board actually has the authority to do based on our regulations is to hear appeals. So if we cite a property owner, they have seven days to appeal back to our office. And if they think that we've made an error or they shouldn't have been cited, they can sign their form, give it back to us, and we put them on the next agenda and they come to the code enforcement board who can make a decision then. Sometimes that might be buying them a little time to fix a problem, deciding whether to probate a fine, or it could be to agree with them and say, you know, you're right, staff shouldn't have cited you for this. That is fairly abnormal. In fact, I think in my four years of this city, I don't think I've ever seen the code enforcement board not back up staff. And obviously, we try to be responsible the way we handle people. So, so pros, you do force somebody into a public meeting where they're going to have to stand here and have pictures of their not-so-well-maintained property broadcast on cable ten. So you'd like to think that would help motivate people to not want to do that. The con, it takes time. If they appeal, we wait a month until the next meeting. And then depending on what happens at that board meeting, you might give them another month to try to fix something before we move forward. So that can be limited. Depends on the board we have in place. The last few years since I've been here, we've actually had fairly good code enforcement boards that have not tended to just kick the can. I know there's been years to pass when that was a frustration from folks and that historically were to my department, that sometimes the board would just keep giving people time because they'd come and tell you the sob story and it just would move on and on and on and nothing would happen. It's very frustrating for everybody involved. Once again, back to another con, this is a similar theme. They have no effect on, the board has really no way to affect change with property owners that don't bother to appeal and just choose to ignore everything. And more may have to help me out with this. The lien holder notification system, I'm going to take a stab at it, is essentially the system that we have in place to notify folks, lien holders of the liens that we have, so that our liens can take some sort of priority, which makes it more likely that they're paid.
That's basically it, Eric, and just, this is statutory requirement. If we want to keep our lien priority so that we might actually get our liens, recover our lien amounts, if it goes to foreclosure, we have to do this lien holder notification. But it can be a good thing because if lien holders actually register and want to maintain their priority, they will take care of the property, pay the fines, do what they need to do. The problem is, this was a statutory change right before I got to the city five or six years ago. There's been very little interest so far from lien holders in registering for the system. So I don't know that there's any way to really bump up the interest, but we'll keep getting the word out.
Delinquent taxes. So all city taxes, except ad valorem, taxes on motor vehicles are due December one and become delinquent. And then we're able to hold liens on those for eleven years. You would like to think that that would motivate people to want to get liens off because that becomes a problem when you try to transfer property, things of that nature. So the pro is that tax liens take priority over a lot of other lien types, so there's a high probability that we'll collect something in foreclosure action. The con is that foreclosures are expensive. And if we don't have a program in place to know what's going to happen after we foreclose, that's quite an investment to roll the dice on hoping something positive happens when it gets to master commissioner sale. Our abandoned property list, which is generated based on what my office is supposed to do relative to our abandoned urban property ordinance. Essentially, every year, by the end of the year, the calendar year that is, I'm supposed to create an initial list of abandoned urban properties as defined by that ordinance, which has a series of things which are all kind of the typical you would think to describe abandoned urban properties in terms of being blighted, you know, at risk for squatters or vermin or dangerous and being vacant for at least a year. So initially, we'll, we supply that list to finance in the PVA at the end of the year and then send out notifications to all the property owners that are on that list. They have until May of the following spring to either correct something of the, whatever the problems are with the property, to appeal my decision to put them on the list to the board zoning adjustments, or otherwise attempt to conjecture me that I've made a mistake and should remove them from the list. Then, following that period in June, I furnish the final list to finance and then those properties that remain on the list are triple taxed for that tax year. So a pro, occasionally a property is transferred and improved and removed from the list, or the current owner might actually choose to do something about it. It happens from time to time. Not often. We had maybe a handful this past year that actually that did happen and that was like a very good year. The other pro is that as we talk about these other programs, I at least have a, hopefully as complete as possible, working list of some of these properties so that we can use that to help us target where to go with these other programs. One of the cons is that, you know, a lot of the abandoned urban properties are just that, they're abandoned. So they remain on the list, we triple tax them, we place liens, the liens sit there, the properties don't transfer, and the entire exercise becomes rather academic. And as I mentioned before, then the list really doesn't change a heck of a lot year to year. And at the end of the day, as I kind of mentioned, the process for that, it's fairly time-consuming for us to put together, you know, because we want to document, photo documentation every year of each one of these and making sure that we can back up why we've included them on the list and things of that nature. So it just takes time to just get around the community, see all of these, document them every single year, knowing that you may not see anything different than you saw last year and that kind of thing. So. As I mentioned, liens and foreclosures, so liens are essentially when we have either taxed or fined somebody and they have not paid, we will ultimately place a lien on their property in hopes that at some point when it transfers, we'll be able to collect and recoup some of the money the city has spent on dealing with that property foreclosure. Once we have liens on a property, the city can choose to initiate a foreclosure, to forestale the property. But once again, you want to have a plan of attack for what's going to happen after it shows up at master commissioner's sale to make sure that's worth it. It doesn't mean that we haven't ever initiated a foreclosure to deal with a problem that might have been particularly egregious, but, you know, that's an expensive, time-consuming solution. And if you don't know that you got a good plan for the end of it, probably ill-advised in most cases. So, once again, liens, so the pro is we recoup money. But the bad thing is even filing those liens costs us money. So, you know, we had this conversation, uh, fairly often Laura and Nancy and I about some of our mowing liens, for example. You know, a property doesn't pay the mowing bill, maybe it's fifty dollars. Well, it paid, it costs us forty-six dollars just to file the lien at the courthouse. At what point is it worth the trouble? Are we wasting more tax dollars to file the lien when we may not ever get it back to begin with? As I mentioned, uh, foreclosure's pro is obviously you force, hopefully force, transfer the property from negligent owner to somebody else that you hope is better and more effective at managing it and chooses to invest in it. Um, and the bad thing is it can take several months. It's very expensive. And as I mentioned, there's no guarantee that the situation will actually improve. Once we have gone through our entire, uh, code enforcement process, we have, you know, perhaps verbally warned somebody about trying to fix an issue. We have sent a courtesy notice. We have sent a notice of violation. We have sent multiple citations and placed liens on the property. The only other option we have left is to file charges in district court with the county attorney. The pro is that most people, when they find themselves with those, once they get served with papers, which is one of the other challenging parts about that, is you have to make sure you get them served once you've actually pressed charges so that they show up in court. Is that most of us, I would, I would think, uh, take it seriously when we find ourselves in a criminal court and want to fix the problem. Uh, but that's just the problem is getting us even to that point, uh, which is an imperfect thing. And it's very time consuming. Once again, to kick the can down the road, we may finally get somebody served with papers, get them on a court day. We may spend months going in there several times a month, sitting for, having multiple staff members sit in district court for multiple hours just to see that can kick down the road and you hope get to a, an end that's acceptable. Uh, the city has another, uh, ordinance which allows folks to demonstrate, uh, financial hardship and then donate vacant properties to us. Um, I don't think this has been used very often. I can only think of one example that I think has happened since I've been at the city. It's, it's very limited, but in its place can be a useful thing, I think. Um, so yeah, pros, in the right circumstances can be useful. Um, and it allows us to, to basically get the property to do something else useful. I think the ordinance actually states that we're supposed to surplus it in six months or something like that. Uh, but in the process, for somebody that's really having a financial issue, maybe they, uh, inherited a piece of property they couldn't afford to maintain to begin with, and they've got these liens that they can't get under, out from under, we can forgive those liens, take the property and surplus it. But the, that's the problem. The property owner has to want to donate the property and then also be willing to document, you know, their own financial hardship, which some people may not be comfortable doing. Um, and as I mentioned, it has to be a vacant, unimproved lot. So if they've got a house on the lot and they want to call, as we've had multiple people over the years, um, tell us like, I don't, I don't want it, please take it. I wish you'd foreclosed. I don't want it. I can't sell it, you know, or it's an estate and I'm not capable of doing anything with it and I can't afford to fix it. And we don't have an ability to do that, other than a, a, a blind, you know, foreclosure proceeding when we just fingers crossed and hope for the best. We have a tax moratorium program. This is more of an incentive rather than, um, the other things that we've talked about. But essentially what that does is for qualifying projects, uh, for structures that I believe are at least twenty-five years old. You can do repair, restoration, renovation. It's not for new construction. But for qualifying projects of enough of an investment, um, you can qualify for a five-year tax moratorium. What that means is, uh, you, you pull your permits and start the work now. We fill out some paperwork and verify what your current property tax assessment is today. Once you finish the project, um, got your COs, your final approvals through the building inspector, all that kind of stuff. And we've verified the investment that you said you were gonna make. We send a notice to finance department and PVA that says this, this property qualifies. I want you to freeze the property tax assessment at what it was for that beginning year. So if you've invested a few hundred thousand dollars into a property, you now get to wait five years before paying full property tax rates on what that, that adjustment would have been. You know, maybe you've got a property that was assessed when you bought it in poor condition at eighty thousand. You finished a project. It's worth a half a million dollars. That, that's five years. You don't have to pay that full rate. So it's used some. Um, we've probably issued half a dozen or less tax moratorium certificates since I've been at the city. It's, it's usually more appropriate for folks doing pretty significant projects. Your typical homeowner renovation project is probably not gonna be something that's gonna give them the kind of benefit that most homeowners are gonna want to bother with the trouble of turning the paperwork into me and that kind of thing. So having gone through all that, um, those are all of our other various and assorted tools. So we've got our fancy, uh, jigsaw puzzle graphic here. Thank you, Laura. So we've tried to, to fill the puzzle in with, with all the, the different opportunities for solutions we have. We clearly have at least one missing piece, um, if not more, much like, you know, every city that deals with this, which is literally every city. So, uh, what might the missing piece be? That was probably going to be this nega- neglected property development program. And we've talked about this a little bit before, but essentially what we're talking about is a program which, um, would identify the properties in that bottom third, identify the properties that have been abandoned, um, but we believe still might have some marketable, under the right circumstances, ability to be rehabbed. Um, but with property transferring is the, the, the key problem. Um, probably also return on investment, but if, if the city participates in this program, we hopefully can transfer that property for little or nothing, making the return investment work. So we force transfer and hopefully close the gap on return investment is the goal. The, the pros, we utilize the foreclosure process, um, to force the transfer of property. But what we also do is have a program in place to enter into an arrangement with a, a qualified community developer to verify that they're in fact going to, um, agree to restrictions on the property to hold them, to completing a project on that property once it's transferred to them. So, once again, it gives us the ability to invest the money in foreclosure while also feeling like we have a good guarantee on the backend that work's gonna be done. Otherwise, we can go clawback and try to get the property back, um, ourselves. One of the other pros about this, in addition to just the general nature of the program, is that hopefully we can, we can get properties, um, that maybe aren't even in the bottom third yet. Maybe they're still in the middle third, but the, the issue is property transfer. We can participate, get them to somebody else, particularly in our historic district, so that improvement happens sooner than later and we avoid those demolition by neglect issues, where it sits for so long that by the time you, you have an ability to do anything about it, it's, it's too late essentially. Um, I think it also helps that once we have the program going and, and the public learns about it, some of these property owners learn about it, um, it signals once again that like, if you want to ignore us, we do have a nuclear option, if you will. Um, and, and perhaps that motivates some people to either do something about it or just sell the property so that at least they benefit from whatever the proceeds might be. Uh, the cons, as we've mentioned about foreclosure all along, is it costs money and it takes time. So this, you know, this program is not gonna be one that we are gonna bring to you and you all hopefully support and we enact. And we see, you know, year one, a whole bunch of properties just all fixed up right away. Um, this is more, uh, we hope to see a noticeable difference in like ten years. Uh, particularly because it'll depend at the level at which you all feel comfortable funding it. So I think when we've discussed the idea that we could do one, two, maybe three properties in the first, um, year and follow them through, hopefully to success, um, see folks working on those properties and see that the, the, the proof of concept is working, then we can figure out how much to invest in the future and, and whether it's, it's marketing itself well enough that we even have that interest to begin with. You know, we're really gonna be kind of figuring this out as we go. It's loosely based on another program from Covington that we found and talked to those folks about, but it's also not exactly the same thing as their program. It's, it's us trying to tailor this to what we think will work in our market. And we're gonna still learn a lot about it as we figure it out. I mean, we've been off and on trying to draft what this is gonna look like for, as I mentioned, close to four years now. And we still, as we talk about putting together our application process and all the details of how it's gonna work in the process, we're, we're still coming up with new questions, you know, so, and I'm sure that's not gonna change, but, but I think it can be effective and we certainly might try. So let's just go through a quick example of what this might look like process wise. So step one, if we get this going, we'll be this, this program committee, uh, which we're gonna form, which will essentially be city manager, myself, the city solicitor, um, putting together property profiles to identify the properties um, based on the criteria contained within the ordinance that we think should qualify for this program. So I'll prepare information, you know, PVA records, pictures, code enforcement history, tax lien history, um, all of those sorts of things. And then on the abandoned properties list, what exactly are the nature of the property maintenance issues with it? Uh, take it to this committee, we'll be as a group, review those properties and identify the ones that actually, um, should be on that list. At, at which point, the goal will be to have this up on the city's website where people can go and see all the properties that we've identified as potentially, um, participating in the program. So we do our part. We, we identify problems, share that with the public, put it out there, and move forward. So our example, uh, we have property X. The owner has been deceased for six years. There's no mortgage. The PVA value is fifty thousand dollars. We have two thousand dollars in delinquent taxes, uh, five thousand dollars in other, uh, code citations and liens. It's been on the abandoned property list. It's got chipped paint, rotted wood, windows bordered by the city, but fairly structurally sound. But it's just, it's, it's stuck in the estate of somebody that's passed away and there's nobody else to do anything about it. So, uh, once we've shared information with the commission that the property is, uh, included to be eligible in the program, assuming it's not a donated property, we would then have to wait, um, to begin foreclosure, once we've got a community developer interested in doing this. Uh, but, uh, assuming foreclosure is necessary, we identify the property. Uh, we would then, as we have it written, send notification to the property owner that says, hey, you've been, your property's been identified for this, this, uh, program. You've got, uh, an appeal period to appeal our decision, um, I believe back to the, to the board of commissioners. If you believe that we shouldn't have identified it. And if that doesn't happen, then you've been notified that we're gonna put it on the list. And it might happen next week. It might happen ten years from now, but it's possible we're gonna start foreclosure proceedings at some point. So you're, you know that the property kind of has a, hopefully a target on its back. So moving forward, it's been placed, it's an eligible property placed on the website. And now we're looking to accept applications from community developers and/or good neighbor property owners is what we're calling them. So we're looking at two, sort of two major wings of the program. The first would be this community developer wing, where essentially we'll have a set of criteria for local folks, um, to believe they're qualified to take on these projects. And they'll have to demonstrate with us, you know, good standing with all of our city licenses and fees and liens and things of that nature. And that they've generally been good stewards of other projects they've worked on. Demonstrate that they have a history with finishing projects, demonstrate a financial capacity to actually do the project that they're applying for. And, and then that's what enables us to say, okay, we've got an eligible community developer. As I mentioned, the blight elimination plan, uh, which essentially is gonna be the community developer's plan for how they're gonna fix whatever the problem is. Um, so either rebuild the home, renovate the home, or if it's, you know, not in our historic district, it could be demolishing what's left of it and rebuilding. Um, it could also be a vacant property that they may want to buy and, and build on. And then we move forward with foreclosure based on those things. The good neighbor property owners are gonna be not so much developers, but they might be somebody that's lived next door to a vacant lot for many years. Uh, they take care of their property, uh, they'd love to have a bigger yard and they can apply and say, oh, I see that this, this corner lot right next to me, the, the city's been mowing or hell, maybe they've already been mowing it for years. And, and we let, we put the property on the list and then they can apply. And what we end up doing, if we don't already own it, is foreclose, transfer it to them. Now we have somebody maintaining it, paying the property tax bill. It may not be as nice as redevelopment of it, but at least we're no longer putting mowing liens on it. We're not paying to maintain it. Um, and somebody gets some benefit out of it. So, uh, the program committee identifies at least one verified applicant. We confirm interest, go through that. We initiate foreclosure. If it already happens to have been acquired because it was donated, uh, then you can basically enter an arrangement with that community developer and, um, put together the, the whatever development agreements we'll have to build into this. So the committee designates developer A. Let's say there was the first one that turned in an application and qualified as a verified applicant and reaches out. That developer will confirm interest and pay a fee of some amount. Right now, we've kind of penciled that in at two hundred and fifty bucks, um, which might either be, uh, a cash payment or a, a letter of credit potentially. We just want that developer to have some kind of skin in the game immediately so that we don't get three quarters of the way through a foreclosure and have somebody just kind of change their mind that they don't want to follow through. And now we've, we've ended up right where we didn't want to be, which is we're foreclosing on a property and we don't know what's gonna happen. The city then initiates foreclosure, uh, several months and several thousand dollars later, we end up bidding on and purchasing the property. In this case, we're guessing, uh, at eighteen thousand dollars. Once the property is acquired, the program committee will then work with that, that applicant to agree to the terms of transfer, including, including that blight elimination plan, uh, and some, you know, development agreement, legal things in terms of whether it's deed restrictions or some other, um, right of aversion. So the city can, can monitor that situation and verify that's gonna happen and that we have recourse if for some reason it doesn't. Um, so the city developer negotiate the contract and, uh, ultimately, we transfer the property to the developer and, and hopefully issue permits and monitor, um, progress. So as I said, the verified applicant signs the agreement, we transfer property, um, and off you go. So at that point, um, they, we hope, live up to their end of the bargain and invest a lo- a large amount of money into it, fix up the property. And at the end of the day, we issue a CO, a final approval, and you know, a year, eighteen months later, whatever it might be. Now we've got a, a property that they can flip and or pay, you know, their property taxes, uh, for, that might be worth now a hundred and twenty-one thousand, where it was worth, what did we say for? Fifty was the assessment. Uh, so that, that property tax, um, increases obviously the, the immediate sort of return on investment for the city. Um, I think the other thing to be aware of is when we're able to fix these bottom third properties that sit on a block and they kind of drag everybody else down, maybe they keep other people from investing that could, but they don't want to do it because they're right next door to this thing. I think we can see indirect benefits hopefully from this, that we can, um, on particular blocks that might have a couple of these, if we're fortunate enough to have community developers come in to want to take them on, that can make a huge difference to motivating the rest of the block is what we hope. Uh, but it's important for you all to also understand that, uh, this is not a program that's immediately gonna return an investment beyond what we spend on it. This is, this is a long-term strategic investment, hopefully, uh, to come back to us in terms of not just tax revenue, but also just housing stock and, and community development. So funding, uh, what we'll propose is to essentially have an annual line item and a funding amount, whatever the board of commissioners is, is comfortable with, uh, in terms of dedicating towards the program. And then once we do that, under the terms except for in the ordinance as we've drafted it, we'll have an ability to hopefully as quickly as possible within that, once again, slow foreclosure process, to be able to, uh, go to those master commissioner's sales, bid on behalf of the city up to an amount, um, so that we don't have to keep coming back and slow the process down, go to closed session with you all on each one. So what we're proposing right now is that, um, on each property that we may initiate foreclosure on, that, uh, the program committee has an ability to, uh, bid up to twenty thousand dollars for purchasing costs on those properties. If you find a property and it's gonna bid for higher than that, then we either need to get you all's approval or, um, it might be that the property actually is very marketable and we're just gonna get outbid by somebody that else that actually already can see a return, in which case, great. Uh, that's not necessarily a poor result for us either. It's unfortunate for the, the community developer that started the process with us. But ultimately, if, if we're able to put a property into foreclosure, get it to master commissioner's sale, and there are other people in this community that want it and are willing to outbid us for that, fantastic. That's more money. We can go back into the next one. I've kind of touched on this already. It takes a while. Foreclosures, uh, aren't quick. And then once we even do a foreclosure, we've got a transfer. Uh, once we transfer, somebody's gonna have to do the work on the project. So as I mentioned, this is not an overnight So as I mentioned, this is not an overnight, us, uh, solve all the world's problems of property maintenance, but I think something that, uh, over time, we're we're optimistic that we can take a bite at it. But we'll see, uh, you know, we'll identify some properties, get the ordinance passed, and see if we have community developers interested, or if we need to alter the program to make that work. So, uh, that's where we are, any other questions? Our next step, uh, will be to, uh, prepare the ordinance for first reading. We've we've essentially done that, uh, already. So we just need to get it on the appropriate agenda for you all to consider, uh, and go over that. You know, any other questions you all have about this? It's, uh, it's it's complex, so it it would be natural to have plenty of questions, and we may not even have answers to all of those things yet, but, uh, yeah, and and continue working, like we said, on all the other puzzle pieces and other incentives to, uh, keep trying to create a better enabling environment for investment in the community and, you know, obviously further the interest of the strategic program.
Can I just add, um, Eric, and I hope I'm not interrupting, but-
No, you're good.
Uh, you know, like, as Eric said, we've been working on this a very long time. We have basically made this up. Uh, the solution to abandoned and blighted properties is not a Frankfurt problem, it's a nationwide problem in every city. Um, if somebody had come up with the solution by now, I, that would be wonderful, and we would already be down that road, but-
We'd happily be copying.
We would, we'd be copying every last bit of it, but unfortunately, every community is different. Uh, so we've worked so long and so hard to try to start thinking about what might work in the community. That being said, because we are making this up as we go, and we do have a draft ordinance for you all, we really do welcome input from you all, any idea, creative ideas, thoughts you have, things you would like to see changed or expanded upon within the program, this program itself. Uh, input from the community, we're anxious to hear, um, what the community thinks of it, and any ideas that they may have for improvements. That's why we're giving it a little bit of time for first reading, uh, if if we get to that point. And we're also, you know, we wanted to give you all the background on the current tools that we have. They're statutory largely in nature. None of them, as you can see, are perfect solutions, uh, but that's what we're working with. This is just another chunk to try to eat away at this problem. Uh, but we hope to be bringing some other ideas to you soon, but this is kinda step one.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, thank you, Eric, for your presentation. Um, I never mentioned that if someone has a piece of property they don't want anymore and it has a building on it and cannot be accepted, does this ordinance now include some?
It it does, Commissioner Rosen. Uh, we actually, and part of that, you know, we realize we're short on time tonight, but part of the, uh, ordinance is actually to change the donated property, uh, method that we have currently, so that it could include properties that have structures on them. Honestly, if people wanted to donate their property to the city, that saves us a lot of time and effort and money for going through foreclosure. So, we wanna make it as easy as we possibly can within the bounds of the law. So we definitely have worked hard to to make that easier.
And I was familiar with the program a minute ago in St. Paul, that they had abandoned properties, the city took them over, um, did a information sheet on them, and they had an open house with a number of properties on the same day. People were locked in, and you know how much should have had to pay for it, like that taxes and other things. And I believe it was a successful program, but I don't really know.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, once we have a group of properties identified, that's totally the kinda stuff we could do to try to market 'em and and get interest.
And another thought that would be, I believe it had a deadline, that we had six months or two years to bring the obstacle, something like that.
Yes, definitely, and part of, part of our, uh, program for developers especially, if they are to take this property, uh, they're they're effectively, under this version of the ordinance, getting the property for free. So, what that means is that we have a lot of expectations, and we are gonna hold them to very strict milestones and timeframes. And if the property does not, uh, meet those milestones, then the property will go back to the city.
Yes, okay.
Commissioner Roger?
Yeah, um, I wanna thank you and staff and everybody for working on this. Um, I I was wondering if there is a way for us to build in, like, an affordable housing aspect to this potentially, maybe down the road, but, um, you know, what if, say, we got to the point that a developer or somebody was able to purchase one of the homes? Uh, could there be an incentive to make sure that they take housing vouchers? Or that we could work towards more affordable housing in the city, because we all know that we need it?
Yeah, and we and we've talked a little bit about that and and how to incorporate that or not, and in what way, in terms of the affordable, um, housing-specific need. Um, I think at at this point, my position is kind of, let let's get the program started and make sure it's marketable, period. And then, to your point, maybe we come back. If it's if it's working really well, people seem to get really good return on investment, and they seem to be happy and interested, then perhaps we try to introduce some things in in targeted ways, um, to get some of those goals satisfied. So I think, yeah, I think that's fair. At the moment, um, we kind of, when we talked about it, chose to to leave it alone for now, because we just wanna make sure that this is even attractive enough that we get people to participate at all. We might find that we don't get much interest and we have to look at something else. Or it, we may get a lot of interest and learn that, oh, we actually can put a few more standards on this and still have it be worthwhile for people.
Well, it's definitely something we can talk about in the future if we need to. But I I think it's a great time to be talking about it, when we just had a structure fire and one of the properties listed, so-
Yeah.
Great time.
So, how do properties be, how do they put on the abandoned properties list?
The abandoned properties list, or-
Yes.
Identified for this-
Abandoned properties list.
So, they, basically, we we, in our time doing what we do, my folks out in the field, um, we go visit all of these properties, and based upon the definition in the abandoned urban properties ordinance, we try our best to find every single property that that meets those requirements, and we add it to the list. It gets a little easier once you've got a list to go on from years past. And so what I'll do usually is I'll go out myself, check all the properties that are on the list, any other properties I'm aware of, that I've seen over the course of the year, add those to the list. I usually share that with both of our neighborhood inspectors, who are out and about, working with a lot of these property owners and issues on a daily basis more than I am. I have them run through the list, add to it as necessary, anything I'm forgetting, I'm not seeing because I wasn't involved in particular case, that kinda thing. We go back and forth until I'm hearing from them that they they are not thinking of something I'm forgetting. Um, and then we go out and document, photo-document, prepare the list, and send the notification then.
And, uh, along those lines, the ones that are on the list, we tax them a triple their rate? How high can we go?
I think the ordinance specifies triple the tax rate.
How com- I mean, that's what the ordinance says.
I think that may be the statutory limit as well, although I can definitely check on that.
That's my question.
I I think that it is.
The the struggle is, most of the owners of these properties have have long walked away. They're not paying, they weren't paying the property tax at single the rate, so they're not gonna be terribly worried about paying at a triple rate, which I think is why it's it's usefulness is fairly minimal. I imagine that when this ordinance was first passed, um, several years ago, they probably had a couple of years where it was more effective. But most of those owners of some of these properties that were willing to 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 do something have now done that, and we're we're down to that shrinking, um, list of these folks that are just abandoned, so hence the-
I guess what percentage of these properties on the list have outstanding liens with the city?
Um, a great deal of them have have tax liens, uh, and essentially, all of them will likely have code enforcement liens of one type or another.
And we can foreclose on them now, can we not?
Technically, as I understand it, as soon as we file a lien for mowing the grass for fifty bucks, we can choose to foreclose if it's worth our while.
So the new, uh, the new program won't enhance our ability to foreclose on these properties?
I believe it will enhance our ability to foreclose on these properties, because it'll give us a strategic way to choose to do it that won't be a waste of money.
Right, but we can foreclose now and get it into another property owner's hands.
You're just, you're just rolling the dice that when it gets to master commissioner's sale, somebody's gonna buy it, and then that somebody is gonna do something useful with it. We've seen that happen before, where we've had issues with the property, and one of the other creditors starts a foreclosure, so we have to pause our code enforcement action. And then unfortunately, what happens in some of those cases is, it gets to the end of foreclosure, and another property owner buys it that is not much of an improvement over that one. Or one that we recently saw, a property we were looking at, um, went through a foreclosure, nobody else showed up to buy it, the person that we were already dealing with that was getting foreclosed on literally bought it back at the master commissioner's sale, and it's still, nothing has changed.
So it it helps us post foreclosure.
Exactly, it it helps us master commissioner's sale forward.
Right.
And unfortunately, the foreclosure process is, uh, it is what it is. It's it's going to take six to nine months on the the short end usually for a foreclosure. There are very few instances, if any, where you can expedite foreclosure on a property. Um, so, it's really, the process is dictated by how long it takes to go through the system. We do hope, however, one of the goals with this program is to bring those foreclosure costs, rather than, uh, hiring someone to do the foreclosures for us. Hopefully, we will be able to do that in-house and cut down on the costs as well. So, gives me an opportunity to, uh, to learn that process and and bring those costs in-house.
And we need to, I guess, it's only as good as how much we cite these people. Do we have enough staff to properly be proactive in citing?
Mm-hmm, we've, and a lot of the properties that will be identified probably already, as I said, have liens on them. What we'll probably do, um, on some of these, because they're they're properties that have perhaps been in that condition for many, many years, um, that just haven't been, other than perhaps mowing liens and things of that nature, have just been sitting. So we may start a fresh case to verify once again, per the terms of the ordinance, that we have, um, now immediately exhausted all of our other remedies, um, even though somebody may have done that in my office six years ago to the property, and then since then, we've just been dealing with it, what we can start that over again, um, and so that we can verify per the terms of the ordinance, that that we've gone through everything, we've given them every opportunity to to give back with us, to work with us, to do something, do that. And I think we have an ability to do that. As we said, it's gonna be a process, and we're gonna start, we'll probably get real busy briefly, trying to to bring the first, you know, handful of these properties to the program committee for inclusion. So it'll be a process, but we can do that.
Commissioner.
Can you, um, talk about, what was the makeup of the committee as it was presented to us?
Uh, the city manager, the city solicitor, myself.
Okay. We also left it in there for the city manager, I think, to, uh, add to additional staff persons as as designees, so that we could have a pretty well-rounded, robust group. We did not, at this point, include the addition of a member of the board of commissioners. Uh, see you guys, yeah, you're looking at, looking at us saying, what, where are we in all of this? Uh, one of the, one of the reasons for, and that's some, definitely something that you all can offer your input on. The only reason we started out in this way is because, um, it kinda puts a little layer between you all and the decision, and takes the, any sort of political pressure out of it. Uh, now, that being said, we are more than open to ideas if if you all want to have a designee or do this differently in in determining the properties. Trying to be efficient and effective and, uh, and keep you guys out of the fray as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you, Laura, thank you all. Good work.
Yeah, thanks.
Eric and Laura.
So we'll hopefully see you guys in October on the first reading. In the meantime, please, uh, schedule meetings with Eric and me, sit down, talk to us and Laura.
Will we have a public discussion of some sort, a meeting?
We haven't planned a public discussion at this juncture, but we did wanna make it clear that we welcome, um, any sort of of input that you hear from the community, or if they wanna contact us directly.
Our last, uh, discussion item, um, are the excess funds project discussion. We've talked about our rainy day fund, thanks to Alicia Boyd and the finance committee, um, adopting the, um, fund balance rainy day policy. Um, as promised, what we had said is that, knowing what our fund balance is, and then, um, with our rainy day policy, we would present the amounts what we're committed to, so you guys can have a discussion about capital improvement, one-time expenditures that you would like to have. As of this juncture, we think our unrestricted fund balance policy, uh, fund balance is approximately eighteen million dollars. And as you all know, that we have a commitment, uh, uh, from the new policy that we would have twelve million dollars represents three months of operating cost in our rainy day fund. On top of that, we have a commitment, um, two and a half million dollars to a possible future YMCA. And also, since we are facing, uh, a possible four million dollar budget revenue shortfall in fiscal year twenty-four, uh, we would recommend that we reserve approximately two and a half million dollars in case we do not raise the revenue or realize the cost savings to close that budget deficit. That leaves approximately one million dollars that can be used for capital improvement or other one-time expenditures. I've solicit the ideas from all of you and from our department heads, and they generally fall into three categories, the parks master plan, uh, support of a strategic plan, and other projects, possible projects to be implemented. We don't have cost estimates for everything, but what I would submit to you all is perhaps, um, discussion tonight. I know this is the first time you all are seeing it, you need some time to digest and talk about it. But perhaps, um, you may want to designate buckets of money for, for example, bucket for each of the three categories, for the parks master plan, for the strategic plan, and for the other category. Um, we could take that, um, and group those together, find cost estimates for the remaining ideas, send it back to you all, you can rank order them as well. But, you know, feel free to discuss individually, the projects are here. We have city staff just in the other room to answer any questions if we can't answer them here. Um, but think about how, perhaps, percentage-wise, how you'd like to see that, um, million dollars to be committed. Also, one other last option is that, uh, we can also schedule, um, at another work session or special session, just to discuss this if you would like. And Bobby, there is the two, if you guys wanna bring that up, the two documents that was also in your packet of how the projects got grouped. You can see the board of commissioners. And I'm happy to run through those, or if you just guys want to to look. But you can see the first column, the parks master plan, of course, really good ideas for things, how we can implement it. The second column, um, priorities under the strategic plan. And then the third column are other ideas that perhaps didn't fit quietly exactly into the other two plans, but were also extremely important. And on the following page, sure, you, to see staff who have proposed some project ideas as well. For staff, we always have a few more extra ideas to suggest.
Any comment or discussion? It's a good start.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked through the ideas, both staff ideas and our ideas. I mean, I think they're all, um, really important and could spur a lot of other projects. But, um, I did just wanna point out, um, I put on one of my lists the five-mile walking biking loop around, um, it's basically around downtown Frankfurt, and it's something that's on, uh, Walk Bike Frankfort's, uh, list of things to try to get done, their strategic plan, and with us talking about Home Street with the the raised funding and that improvement there, I feel like that could take up a part of that loop. So, um, I know that they had received an estimate of about twenty-five thousand for that design and planning phase, and then that could potentially help us tap into funding, grant funding for actually implementing that loop and getting that done. So, that was something I had- So that was something I had, I'd sent in.
Yeah, it's under the other category?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It is, yep.
I'd like to second her. It should be done. I'm agreed to that. I think I put a star beside it.
So are we two, we'll vote on it in the August voting meeting? How, how do we proceed, the voting on this happening?
I would like to, I think one thing that will be helpful, since we don't have costs for all associated with it, perhaps decide some buckets of funding for each of the three plans. And then we could also send them back to you when we have additional costs from the ones we don't have right now and you can rank order them and then we could send that back to you so you could see how they fell. Because maybe they'll be lucky enough that everybody is choosing the same top two projects and it equals, if you have one bucket at three hundred fifty thousand, it equals that. So that would seem like, it would be logical that if everybody supported that, we can, like I said, get it, just get a few more costs. But if proposing kind of priority as in a bucket category for how much you'd like to spend might be helpful as well. And if not, we can just list order them when we have the rest of the cost and send it out to you for you to be rank order.
Thank you. One of the questions that I will have, or a, a piece of information that I think will really help narrow and focus for me would be identifying what projects on here would qualify for existing grants or grants that we might be able to go for so that when we're thinking about said buckets of money, are we actually having to tie that money up or perhaps are there matches out there in ways, you know? So I'm not saying we have more money, but we actually have made, may have, may be able to spread it out more. So if that's something we can have, I think, I mean, and yeah, looking at it, I mean, a lot of that, I think we've, we've discussed. You know, some of the projects have been discussed, you know, with grant matches and, but that, that would certainly help me out.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, I had a question along the same line, the Home Street project. I thought we were going for some planning for that.
Yes. Yes, on Home Street, the raised project, we're doing the planning right now. And then, once we think about implementing the recommendations, livability, accessibility, that is something that we would look towards applying for federal dollars to help us implement, like we did for the Tygo project.
I'm not sure if it would help, we've covered it at this point, but it does, it would totally be the same of money that we have in hand.
I think what Commissioner Unger was referring to is actually to, to plan. We could have tried to, we would apply for federal dollars to implement the five-mile loop. And I think what's requested here is the planning where we've kind of guessed where it could go, but we actually really need to spend some additional time and maybe work with someone to actually map out to see what's really feasible. Because right now, it's, there's a concept on paper, but we haven't fully fleshed out what that would be.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? That ends the discussion items. We'll go back to action items.
Yes, final action item, the Broadway banner agreement with RJ Corman. Staff requests the mayor to sign an agreement with RJ Corman Railroad for the installation of a banner on the railroad trestle on Broadway. This is, was a priority identified in the downtown master plan and something that folks have been working on for a couple of years. I think staff and downtown merchants, DFI and others are excited to see this come to fruition. We worked hard with RJ Corman to find a, an agreement with this. We, the agreement includes a thousand dollar fee to RJ Corman and then we have to obtain insurance since this banner will be attached to the trestle. The insurance, we learned today, so we gave you an incorrect amount in your memo, but we did find, today we learned it'll be two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the insurance for the banner. And the cost of the fabrication and installation of the banner will be five thousand dollars. So a total cost of seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve this action item. Is there any discussion, Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, I was wondering how long the life of the banner is.
The, how long do you think the banner Rebecca will last?
We're estimating about five years. It depends on how quickly it fades and, you know, where I think.
Just for the microphone, to say Rebecca was saying estimating about five years and one of the things we're modeling off and using materials is what was done in Shelbyville.
Correct. We think it'll last about five years, but, you know, we'll just have to keep an eye on it as far as fading and if there's any damage.
How often do we pay the insurance on that?
Annual. I know. I called RJ Corman to make sure that that was correct and they said that's the number. That's, it's apparently because of what the, the banner may or may not cause or may, something may catch on it and it's like eight thousand dollars liability, or I'm sorry, eight million dollars liability.
I'll accept that.
Thank you.
We have a motion, any other discussion? Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, no motion carries. Thank you, Rebecca. And moving on to the discussion of the tentative agenda for our voting meeting, August twenty-second. I think I heard something about a Dolly Graham bathroom approval. Commissioner Rosen?
Yes, it's a topic that has come up a lot of times and we would like to discuss it, which is the road for the, I'm sorry. Just to put my thoughts on that, that seventy percent of the homeowners in the United States have some kind of debt and they're very attached to having a reasonable place in the hood. That we should discuss paying for the road and they'd like to see that up the agenda for, for the voting meeting.
Anybody put that on their excess funds list?
No.
No.
Any, any other tentative agenda?
I will also follow up with you all, see if it's the will of the board to put it on the agenda for the work session.
Any other?
Oh, I was saying, no, the floor, go ahead and mark me down.
All right, saying that, we'll move on to unfinished business.
I had unfinished business with Sean in Parks.
Sean, are you still here? Is there any other while we wait on Sean? Any new business while we wait?
I had a new business. I had another complaint in the Collins Lane area, Leewood Drive at Bell Point Circle. The, they're looking to see if the city can put up a sign somewhere at the Bell Point Circle in Leewood interchanging. If you're going down Leewood Drive, you're taking a left onto Bell Point. You have to go around the circle where the trees are and some people are cutting and almost hitting people head-on right there. So apparently it's becoming more of an issue now. I don't know if some new people have moved into the community or not. Apparently, there's been almost some head-on collisions there at Bell Point and Leewood Drive. It's like a, it's like a rock circle and you really just have to go around it. A lot of people just.
I'll follow up with our public works department to take a look.
What's the best way to, as we get complaints about speeding and other traffic issues in neighborhoods, what's the best way to go about letting you all know?
Usually it's an email.
Well, we will be having C-click Fix.
Once we get that up.
Do we do that for speeding or is that just for public works type of things?
Yeah, I don't, that'll be the easiest way. And that, we're gonna roll that out, my understanding is, in the next couple of weeks. But yeah, just call City Hall, it's the easiest way, eight seven five eight five hundred. Belinda will get you where you need to go.
Just as an update, there is a beta test. We're beta testing the C-click Fix now, so it's real. We're gonna make a few changes to it, but we have tested it. We are testing it now.
Any other new business before we have Sean come back?
Sean, porta potties. So in regards to the porta potties, I guess, contract that we had, there was some issues in regards to the company who was not coming to, I guess, dispose of them appropriately and take care of them. I know that your department has had some issues in, in getting them out there to fix things, like the door, the one at the farmer's market. I guess it was, it's been brought to our attention and it seems like it's ongoing. And I was at the farmer's market last week for the national night out and I was embarrassed in how one of our bathrooms smelled and the way that it looked, which was our handicap accessible one. And I did talk to our, our person down there.
Christian.
Christian, yes, Christian. I did speak with him and, you know, he just seemed a little perturbed in, in regards of that company that's not been working with you guys well and, and communication. So how can we, the city, how can, how can this board help you go ahead and just say, let's get rid of that company, get their porta potties out of here and go with the other one so we can have clean bathrooms?
Yeah, we need to just switch those out because if you remember two or three months ago, we went through the RFP and got a new company to contract with us.
Yes.
Well, that company's been non-responsive. I've gotten in touch with them, said you won the bid and the law will come and say, well, you have to talk to our supervisor and he's in Akron, Ohio. I've tried to contact him three times. I've left you messages, I've sent you emails, no response. So I'm assuming they don't wanna work with us. So it's a bigger company, so I'm assuming they're just like so overwhelmed and whatever, they're just like, you know? So my recommendation is we just go on and take those out. We have been replacing some of those from that company with A-one portables out of Lexington. They're more local, they've worked with us pretty well and they've been very responsive. So my suggestion is we just go on and call A-one, have them, have Kentucky portables take those out and replace them with A-one. And they, they're newer, they're nicer and they've been very responsive in servicing them well, so.
Okay, and so with that, will that cost, will there be a cost raise in there to where we need to be aware of that? I just wanna make it easier for you and for us to have clean toilets.
They're pretty comparable on price.
Okay, so just switching them out is just like, we want them out of here.
Yeah, it was horrible. We'll, we'll have a delivery charge for the new ones that come in and then they'll just be the, I think we get monthly bills. So it shouldn't drastically affect the budget.
I would like to move forward in switching those out to the new group. They've been more communicative, they've been able to work well and at least we'll have clean bathrooms.
I didn't want, I didn't wanna switch everything out if this other company was finally gonna come to the table, but I have tried and tried and I can't get a whole, I can't, the, the Eastern US Regional Manager or whatever that's supposed to sign the paperwork for the, for the contract will not get back in touch with me, so.
Yeah, it's been a month after our fiscal year and this is when it was supposed to start.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I've given it every chance I could.
I would let, it was just horrible at the farmer's market selling vegetables.
Those get used a ton down there.
Yeah.
A lot, and by other folks that kind of come and go and.
And our transit employees.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll switch those out.
Do we need to do anything different than what we passed before?
I don't think that we do, but we can definitely talk about that, Sean.
Yeah.
If we need to load on something.
Well, we got up through the past, we've just, parks have just always hired a company to come in and provide porta potties. There's never been a contractor, there's never been a, that was one reason why we went with that RFP, to try to have a contract, to be able to hold them a little more to the fire if it wasn't being serviced correctly. We can say, hey, your contract says you service them, blah, 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 you know?
But then it just turns out that didn't work, you know, trying a different way to hold them accountable.
And when we did the RFP, only one, only had one response. So it wasn't like we had a backup plan, we could go with the next highest bidder or the next lowest bidder. We just only had the one, so. But A-one's been good. They're at Lexington, they've been really good. They're the one that provided the trailer for Dolly Graham and it's been very good, so.
Well, Christian said great things about them, so.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner May?
Just quick follow-up on that. Do you know off the top of your head, or does anybody in the room know off the top of their head, what, what we spend per year on?
About fifteen grand.
Fifteen grand per year and do you know how many years we've been spending roughly that amount?
As long as I've been here, I'd say every bit of, I'm sure we've, every year we spend a hair or more as it price goes up, probably at least ten years or better. I'd say maybe more than that.
Just for that or for the city?
The city.
The city.
Yeah.
Those at the park.
I would roughly say we've been paying ten to fifteen thousand dollars for multiple years.
And that three-unit modular one we're getting is around two hundred something?
Oh, yeah, the, the new.
For the one at Dolly Graham?
The permanent building, yes, about two hundred thousand. Yeah, the big one.
Is there a lot of staff time running these contracts and, or is it just kind of a?
No, there's not much staff time. Oh, writing the contracts?
Yeah. Dealing with it back and forth?
A little bit, not too bad. It took a while to get it all developed, to go through the approvals and make sure it was all spelled out right, blah, 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 blah. But now that we got the shell of it, it shouldn't be too hard. We have to adapt it and change dates and make little tweaks. But moving forward, we got the, you know, the blueprint for it, so it shouldn't be too bad. But like with a lot of things, we just, not getting very many people bid on stuff, not just porta potties, but other jobs and, you know? So we don't have a whole lot of options. But I feel comfortable with A-one right now. Now, we won't technically have a contract with them, but they, right now, have been good.
They're different than who we're using.
Yes, they're different than who we're using, yes.
All right, thank you. That's, that was my concern. Thank you.
No other new business? We can go into executive session again?
Make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to KRS 838.1504D. For the purposes of conducting a performance evaluation of the city manager, actually may be taken in open session.
Motion?
Second.
Oh, she's seconded it? Second by Commissioner Rosen?
She's like, I gotta get in or Alicia Patricia's gonna get in.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're not going to executive session, do we need to take?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the final evaluation of the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the final evaluation of the city manager as written.
Yes.
And the second, all those in, no, ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Rosen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
No.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
See you next time.